We call this meeting to order. Before we proceed with the regular proceedings of the meeting, I think that we all are very aware that we had a significant loss to our nation. We had a significant loss to our city. And we are, I wanted to make sure that we made some time to just remember Linda Brown. As I was reading through many of the comments that people said, it's pretty interesting to see how nationwide Linda Brown was recognized for the courage of being a little girl and having her father stand up for her in the middle of a significant battle of segregation in our nation. And by one babe, we have the significant change that we have today. And I just want to encourage all of us that are out in the community to just remember that, the impact that we can all have in the lives of others, and to figure out how we're going to use that to empower others as we move forward. If we could have a second of silence just to remember Linda Brown. Thank you. We now proceed with the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We will now pay attention to Mr. Cohen, who will introduce Mr. Gary Roten.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's invocation is being given by Gary Roten. He was the pastor of Marinatha Baptist Church from 1988 to 2012. He's currently the president of Christians for Life and a board member of the Topeka Christian Chamber of Commerce. He's also the interim pastor of Emmanuel Baptist Church. Pastor Gary.
Let's pray. Jesus, thank you for this opportunity that we can come before this group and openly pray to you. We thank you, Lord, for that. I know in your word you share about the structure of the family, and you share about the structure and the authority of a church, and you share about the structure and authority of government, and your blessings are on all of that. So I pray, Lord, that if we come before the structure and the authority that comes from the Topeka City Council, that in times of challenges, in times of struggles, but also times where good, important decisions need to be made, that you will grant wisdom to this group, that decisions made will be beneficial to citizens like myself and to others. I pray, Lord, that as you bless this group, that also the structure of families that might be representative among these groups and those in attendance that on this evening, that you recognize there may be challenges going on, not only in their Topeka, this meeting today, but also in their personal lives. Lord, as I pray for the wisdom to grant help with the decisions of this body, of this government officials, the same wisdom, I pray, Lord, that you will show that is available to them in their personal lives, whether it's a child that they're having a challenge with, or maybe in a marriage that's hitting a couple bumps in the road, that you are also available to be cried out and prayed to in the midst of those circumstances also. So bless this time together, this meeting, with the wisdom and the decisions they will make. In your name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, man under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice We have no proclamations tonight. We don't have any presentations. At this point, we proceed with the roll call.
Mayor DeLeyse.
Here.
Councilmembers.
Clear.
Clear.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Padilla.
Here.
Jensen.
Mayes.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
And Lester.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jensen is, we're missing his present at this point in time. He is attending the wake of a family member. He will be here shortly. We now proceed with appointments. If the clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Scott Tummons to the Topeka Metropolitan Transit Authority for a term ending May 1, 2022.
Do we have motion discussion with regards to this appointment?
So moved.
We have a motion made by Councilman Mayes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Emerson. Are there any comments? Seeing none, we proceed with the voting. The mayor doesn't vote.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voting yes, the motion passes. I don't see Mr. Tummons in the crowd. Is he here to be recognized?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. We appreciate his service. It's great to see you here, Ms. Duffy. We now proceed with the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
A, our minutes of the regular meeting of March 20, 2018, and there's a list of open after midnight applications. Staff is recommending approval.
What is the pleasure of the body?
I'll move to.
Councilman Cohen makes a motion. Councilman Padilla seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes. The consent agenda passes. We now move into the action items. If the clerk would read.
A is a public hearing concerning a plan of finance for the issuance by the city of Wichita, Kansas, the issuer of one or more series of its healthcare facilities revenue bonds issued under a authority KSA 121740FC in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $36 million, and a resolution authorized approving the issuance by the city of Wichita, Kansas, of its healthcare facilities revenue bonds for the purpose of financing and refinancing the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of an existing senior living facilities located in the city of Topeka, Kansas.
City manager.
Mayor, Mr. Rick Wright from Gilmore and Bell is here tonight. If there are questions regarding this particular agenda item, and I guess that's all we have to add at this point. It's a procedural item.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Wright that you would like to address? This is a bond issue. It's a pass through. I think that we all have the information in our documents, but I just, I wanted to provide, see if anybody had any questions. Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the body?
Move approval.
Councilman Emerson moves approval.
Should we have a hearing?
Public hearing. Oh, we do need to, thank you very much. We do need to have a public hearing. At this point, we open up public hearings so that anybody that is in favor or against this project can go ahead and stand up and speak. I will ask again if there's anybody interested in speaking. Asking a third time. Seeing nobody, I guess at this point in time, the public hearing is closed. So now we have a motion made by Councilman Emerson. We have a second made by Councilwoman Clear. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes. The motion passes. Thank you for being here to represent Presbyterian Manor. We now move to item B, resolution to support the elimination of human trafficking. If the clerk would read.
B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Michael Lester in support of eliminating human trafficking.
City manager.
Yes, Mayor. In this particular issue, we're working with Councilman Lester as far as introduction, but we've been working with Topeka Rescue Mission on this issue, and we have activities planned for Thursday. But at this point, I'll turn it over to the body.
Councilman Lester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I am honored to have been asked to help with this resolution in the elimination of human trafficking. And I also want to point out that Councilmember Clear has also been very active on this topic for a number of years. It first came to my attention, actually, a couple years ago in working with Barry Fieker in regards to some of the atrocities that are actually going on in our community in regards to this. So as City Manager Trout said, we were going to have a joint press conference on Thursday, and a lot more information on that. So I'm just honored to have the opportunity to bring this resolution because it is truly something we need to declare war on.
Absolutely. I would like to invite Reverend Barry Fieker, who is here with us, to come and maybe say a few words to the body. I will say for myself, it was wonderful when he and I started talking about this and getting the council members invested in the process. As everybody knows, we have the mayor's task force against sexual and domestic violence, and one of the exciting parts is the fact that this is one of those areas in which, when you dig a little bit deeper, you find out that there's a deeper story. And we, as a community, are very proud to stand beside Reverend Fieker, as I call him Papa Barry, and just continue this war in being a city that is known, like we spoke about earlier, about being the birth of freedom in this nation, so.
Madam Mayor, thank you, City Manager and councilmembers. I think tonight that you have the opportunity to do something very historical, that many years from now, we'll have the opportunity to be looked on as a milestone in not only the city and county, but what's going to possibly happen in this nation. February 1st of this year, National Freedom Day, 70th year commemorating 1865 when Abraham Lincoln signed a resolution to establish the 13th Amendment to abolish slavery. The Kansas House and Senate, both on that same day, declared war on human trafficking in Kansas, making this the first state in the nation to take seriously this issue of modern-day slavery. And so Topeka and Shawnee County has the opportunity now to do the same thing, to be the first city and county in the United States, to engage in a long-term battle that we should have been engaged in a long time ago, to say that we do not believe this is right. We do want to do something about it, and we want to come together as a city and as a county, and hopefully join with other cities and counties throughout the state of Kansas, and hopefully someday the whole nation. And so, Councilmember Clear, I just want to thank you for early on bringing this to our attention, and others who have now been on board with this so that we could see something that we hadn't seen before. I've appreciated the opportunity to visit with most of you about this issue. And again, tonight is just a beginning, that this community can come together with its leadership, leading the charge, to say, let's do this together to make freedom for all. And so, thank you for the opportunity to speak to this.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments before we proceed with the voting? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Papa Barry. That's all right. I like that.
Topeka dad.
Don't call me Papa Bear.
It was close.
Sure.
I would like to say that I appreciate this coming forth, and I appreciate all the work that you've done on this. The Department for Children and Families, we're dealing a lot with human trafficking in Pittsburgh area down, you know, down south. And I'd like to see us maybe correlate with the state and all that we've been doing, because they're, it's really, really big down there. And I tell you what, you hear about it, but it's real. It's very real. When you start working with it, and, you know, and with the people and the children, I worked on a case where one of our children became a victim and then was part of that process, and it's so real, and they don't, they don't quite understand it. And so I would hope we can pull in and I'll get you that, Barry, that information of some contact people that work on it through the state, because the more people we have, the more resources that we have, the greater the progress.
Good news is that we're working with the secretary right now on this, and have become very aware of the challenge that we have with foster care. And it's time to quit pointing fingers at the Department of Children and Families and get behind and support them. Over 7,300 foster care kids in Kansas that are in need of care, and we do not have nearly enough foster parents. This is part of combating human trafficking, to really step behind and do what some of you in this room have already done, and that step up to the plate and be able to do that to take care of these kids. So, yeah, we appreciate what's being done with the department, and we need to do it together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to express my gratitude to everyone and to Papa Barry. I've never called him that when it was safe streets.
Thank you.
I'm sure you appreciate that.
I'm going to take it.
It's just something that we all know has existed for some time. We talk about it in our groups. We talk about it in our meetings. I think it's important that a concerted effort, an organized effort, brings, bring all those people together to get something done, so that we're not working in different directions trying to accomplish the same goal. I think we'll be much more successful in that way, and I appreciate all the efforts that Councilwoman Clear and Councilmember Lester and yourself and others who are working behind the scenes to bring this about and bring it to our attention, and so that we don't forget about it after today, that we continue. I'm glad to see that you have another follow-up event on Thursday, and then anything after that that helps remind us of our efforts, I would appreciate, and thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Hiller.
I also want to credit you and your team. We all know what a wonderful job the Rescue Mission has done here in Topeka, and something that's really beautiful about the way your predecessors and you and your teams have managed the mission is that we've been so totally locally supported and totally focused on taking care of people who were here, both people who have lived here as well as people who have come, or passing through or have come through. When you first told me about your vision for this project, my jaw dropped, because here was this man who had been totally focused locally, talking to me about a national vision. And I know, I imagine that people will learn more about that when we do the announcement on Thursday, but that's one huge vision, yet with human trafficking, to do it right, how could you not? Because for safety, sometimes people need to go away. We need to have safe places that aren't here for them to go away. And similarly, we know that people whom we treasure and have taken care of may be on the run, and we need to be part of a bigger network to help find them and make sure that they are safe. And we know that, but the fact that your vision for this project is to look at the whole country is amazing, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing that you have overwhelming support, I think that I will call the vote right now for the resolution. Councilwoman Clear.
Moves to approve.
Moves to approve. Councilman Lester, seconds. I think at this point, we all vote.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voting yes. It passes unanimously.
May the Lord bless you all. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you. After roasting my Topeka dad, we now move to item C, resolution for the capital improvement plan. If the clerk would read.
C is a resolution introduced by City Manager by trap authorizing and adopting the 2019 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan and the 2019 to 2021 Capital Improvement Budgetment and approving the project budgets attached.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body. Tonight, the staff has presented the CIP and CIB for your consideration. We've answered many questions over the last few weeks regarding the projects, and the staff stands ready to answer any additional questions that may be presented tonight. We seek your approval of the presented CIP and CIB resolution.
Looking to see if there's any questions. Yes, Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Over the past couple weeks, I've sent numerous questions to the staff, and they have responded. I appreciate that. However, there are, as staff is aware, there are a couple projects with significant price tags attached to them that I have some follow-up questions for, and I believe there's others here that may also have additional questions before we vote on this. With that said, I would like to move that we postpone this for two weeks, the action, this action item, so that we have time to ask the rest of our questions and get answers.
We have a motion made by Councilman Emerson, and we have a second by Councilwoman Ortiz to delay for two weeks the discussion and the approval of the capital improvement plan. Are there any comments or discussion? Councilwoman Ortiz.
I would like to know, or if we can get, or is this, I don't know, I don't, the questions that are being answered, asked, is everybody getting answers to those questions?
I don't know which ones have been submitted at all. We have answered a number of questions, but it would not be difficult to forward those that were regarding the specific projects, understanding the projects, and so forth.
I think it'd be great if we all could get the answers and the questions. That way, we're not being repetitive, or if it sparks up another question, I would, I would like to see that.
Yes, we'll send that out tomorrow.
Any other comments? We do have two individuals signed up for public comment on this item. The first person signed up to speak is Raoul Muñoz.
Hola.
Hola, buenas noches.
Buenas noches, ¿cómo está?
Doing very well, thank you.
Good, good. Well, my name is Raoul Muñoz, and I lived in Topeka here for the last 30 years. I love this town. I love the city, and I've represented as a boxer, as Topeka boxer, for the last 20 years. But today I'm here because we do live on east part of town, on East 6th Avenue, and we have noticed that we need a little bit more attention over there, more lighting. Our sidewalks are pretty damaged, and just to see what can be done. I mean, it's, we have our kids, they're crossing the street, and sometimes they don't respect the pedestrian, the signs, and they just, especially the one on 6th and Lake View, if you're there, the traffic is just heavy there. They don't respect that sign. And I see people crossing, they just don't respect the sign, they don't respect the people crossing the street. So I would really appreciate and take in consideration to do a little bit of, you know, the east, our part of town. Yes, it's all.
Okay.
Sí.
So he's saying it's all.
I see.
Well, thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. I would invite you to, when the meeting is done, or actually, once this is, you know, completed.
Yes.
To talk to Dr. Jason Peak.
Okay.
He can give you, he's right here, Mr. Peak. If you could raise your hand so that Mr. Muñoz can identify you.
Okay, okay.
Yes, Councilwoman. And he can talk to you about the plans that we have, and maybe earmark some of those things in your areas, and also talking with him would raise the concerns of the things and could tell you about solutions. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Also, I'm sorry, also, if you drive there about 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night, it's completely dark. I mean, it's just no lighting at all, and, you know, I've been, just when you come in from, out of town, and you come in through 6th Street, that's the first impression you get from Topeka is dark. I mean, it's just, you know, and that's east part of town, and it's not light at all. If you drive by there at 9:00 o'clock, it's just completely dark.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Raoul is one of my constituents. He calls me probably several times a year. We're not, we're not going to say how several, but several. There used to be a walkway, and what he's talking about, one of those lights there at 6th and Lake, and they took it out, and they said, we're not wanted for it anymore. I have turned in Raoul's complaints constantly. So if we can relook at that, he is correct. A lot of pedestrians cross from 6th, from the south side going to the north side, going to Salvation Army to eat, or to the barber shop, or wherever they're going. And it's kind of weird, because when we changed the parking, we've also changed the, what do I want to say? We changed the view of oncoming cars, of coming. So if you're trying to pull out, if I'm north, trying to pull out, going west, it's very, very hard of how, of how we've changed. They changed the parking to parallel, I believe, and that was done several years ago. The city went in and did that. So if we can look, if we can look at that, I've sent stuff in to staff, and they said, it's not warranted, but Raoul is correct. It's dark through there, and what's happened is, on the building there at 6th and, not your building, but the building across the street, there was a light there that they were paying for, and so they turned that light off. But we still have another light that sits kind of back more towards the south, and so we just, we just need to really, really look in there. And then we've never, we haven't had money, and I think now we have a little bit of money, so we need to put it on the light list if, and to see if we do have some more money right in there. But when those lights are out, because there's one, they're not at the corner, the corner light that was being paid for, they turned that off, because the person that was paying for it didn't want to pay for it anymore. And if I'm not correct, if I'm correct, I think that was your, your business across the street from there that turned that off.
Well, yeah, it was a, business went out of business, and, you know, we couldn't afford it anymore, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we had to turn off some lights that, you know, pretty much were pretty much.
Lighting up the whole, the whole area.
Lighting up the whole area, and once we went out of business, boom, the whole thing went dark.
Right, right.
So, I mean, it's like, you look and see, there's no street, you know, there's no lights in the streets or anything, so.
So I think a couple things have happened. You know, we've lost that. We need to relook and see what we can do. We need to see if it warns for a pedestrian again. And then we also need to look at the safety measures, because even when the bus comes, it's terrible. They pass through there because they cannot really see who's standing there, standing back from the street, so.
And, I'm sorry, and right now, we don't have a business, but we do live on the second floor of the building. So, I mean, it's like, you know, we come there, come to our house, and it's like dark at night, so, I mean, you know, there's no lighting in the streets or anything, so.
Right. Well, we'll look at that, and then regarding the sidewalk, and Jason, are you taking all this down that I'm saying? Okay. Regarding the sidewalk, because you're going to have to watch the tape if not, I was told, and I'll try to look for that email, that that is your business's sidewalk, so that is your responsibility for that, that that's not, that's not city sidewalk. But if we can look at it again, Jason, just to make sure.
Well, I mean, it's not just our sidewalk, but, I mean, you know, all up, all up on the street, I mean, you can see the sidewalks are just, you know.
Absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely. But I know yours are kind of cracked and right, right around there, and I was told that's, that's the business owners that they're in front of. So I just want to make sure I'm telling you right.
Okay.
And so, Jason, if you can look out in there. Now, one more thing, and I'll be through here, Mayor. He has a really, really weird drain behind your business. You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm talking about, Raul, right?
Yeah, it is, and we, we keep, we, we keep getting billed for that, you know, it's just.
Right, right. And I've asked staff to look at that, and I never really got a clarification on that.
We just paid like a three hundred dollar bill for that drain, and we're not even, you know.
So I, if, if we can get Mr. Muñoz that, those answers, and as well as myself, that would be great. Thanks for coming up, Raul.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muñoz.
Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak is Joseph Ledbetter.
Thank you, Governing Body. I'll be brief, since there's a motion on the floor to continue this. I just want to make sure that I've entered into the record this letter from the East Topeka Council, which I helped draft. There's a number of us as members that are trying to promote the east side, which goes from Oakland all the way to High Crest and on out to the lake. So, this East Topeka interchange has been identified by this fairly large group as something that's of interest, that we'd like to see progress and move forward. So we're asking that that funding be moved up on the capital improvements budget. And I will say that I've talked to three, it's three lobbyists, different groups that work with the legislature about highways, and they're all telling me that next year there will be discussion about highway budgets and getting those monies back into the highway system, and that possibly in two thousand, yeah, two thousand twenty, there will be possibly a projects task force budget released. And it's going to be important that we have plugged our projects into that, and that we have put some skin in the game on these designs. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, so, we have a motion, and we have a second to postpone this discussion for two weeks. Seeing no other comments, we proceed with the voting. Nine having voted yes. The motion passes. This item is moved for two weeks from now. The next item was resolution for the CIP revenue bonds for the enterprise, for the enterprise fund projects, if the clerk would read.
D is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout declaring the necessity to repair, alter, reconstruct, enlarge, or improve the city's water, water pollution, and/or stormwater utility system through improvement projects authorized by the resolution and providing notice of intention authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds in the manner required by KSA 10-1201-NC.
City Manager?
My assumption is, based on the decision to postpone two weeks, that you would like to do so with the same purpose for this particular item?
Yes, sir.
Is that a motion, Councilwoman Emerson?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion. We also postpone this.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Councilwoman, clear seconds. We have Mr. Joseph Ledbetter signed up to speak.
I'll pass, thank you.
He passes. Do we have additional comments with regards to this issue? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Henderson, why do you want to postpone this?
This is also part of the capital improvement, I'm sorry, Your Honor, if I may.
Yes.
This is also part of the capital improvement budget we're talking about. So, some of the projects we're talking about were on this, this portion of the capital improvement. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I need a second on that.
Sorry. I thought you said I need a second on that. Okay. Seeing no comments, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine have, nine have been voting yes. The motion passes, and this item will be deferred to follow also the CIP. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I would ask that if you could please, I know that we're currently working with Mr. Emerson, and we'll get the other council members the information that was passed to him before, and to Councilwoman Hiller, and some of their questions. But if you have items, we really would like the time to be able to work through them and get thorough answers, and then get those back out to everyone. So, please provide that information, if you haven't already. I know that some has been provided, but if you would, please provide that information, so we can be ready for two weeks from now.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Your Honor. And just a question for legal. I'm always hesitant to send emails out to other council members, thinking it might violate the Open Records or Open Meetings Act. But I don't have a problem with my questions and the answers being distributed to everyone, but is the easiest way, I mean, can we send questions to everybody, or?
No, I would, I would advise against doing that.
Councilmember Emerson.
Okay.
Work through the, make sure.
Yeah, I was gonna say, work through the city manager, work through my office, either myself or Mr. Gerber, if you have questions. And we'll get those answers, and then we'll distribute them, so then it's not an issue with regards to that.
Thank you. I was just gonna emphasize just that, the importance of us going ahead and making use of City Manager, especially when we're dealing with issues pertaining to staff. That way, he can go ahead and, and as executive, he will allocate the staff and make sure that then we get that response that we need. So, all right. We now move to E, Resolution on Budget Priorities, if the clerk would read.
E is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout establishing the city's 2019 budget priorities.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the budget priorities are presented for your consideration and approval.
Before we proceed with discussion, we do have individuals signed up for public comment. I think that it would aid in the discussion if we hear them out. The first person signed up to speak is Mr. Luis Estrada.
Slowly, I hear. Okay. All right. Thank you very much for presenting this opportunity for me to speak. I'm pretty much, was gonna echo everything that Mr. Muñoz came up here and said. I actually have been working with him lately, and what's going around right now is something that we put together, it was in Spanish originally, because we were actually trying to hear out what the majority of the Latino members of the east end of Topeka have to say in regards to what's, they think are, is needed for that particular area of town. On, on this particular document, it's, it's very simplified, because I felt that'd be the easiest way to get a, a feedback from them. So, as, as you see, some of this is things that we are actually tackling, or the city's actually tackling. Obviously, I know a lot of you from different boards and committees that I'm involved with, but more than anything, I wanted to make sure that I voiced my advocacy for the east end of, of town. East Topeka is somewhere that I grew up in, and I feel very strongly that to make sure that they're not left behind. Obviously, the flagship project right now is the Washburn Tech East, is something that's going to be very needed on East Topeka. But as Mr. Muñoz made aware, Sixth Avenue is kind of like a corridor that is traveled by a lot of people. They come into town, especially from Lawrence. I know lately, there's been a lot more cycling activity that way, and I'd kind of like to see a lot more improvement as far as the aesthetics of infrastructure there with sidewalks and guttering and things of that nature, that we have pedestrians that are taking advantage of a lot of the trails that are being built in that end of town. So, if you could take the time to read some of this, the information, the contact information that's supplied is for Raul and his wife, who went around and took the time to speak with a lot of the residents and business owners of the Sixth Avenue corridor. I, myself, will make my rounds eventually, but as you know, I'm involved with a lot. So, I'm taking my time making sure that I get them involved as well, and they take the initiative. Lighting is, I think, one of the big issues, as he spoke about, not only in the Sixth Avenue corridor, but a lot of those side streets. That's very much a safety issue. I think the police department would appreciate a lot more lighting in some of those areas as well. And that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Councilwoman Ortiz?
I just want to say, I'm trying to think what year it was, East Topeka South Neighborhood Improvement Association, we got funded for lighting, and we went around, and we had like ninety-six lights, but then the money, I don't know what happened, and then we got denied. So, our NIAs are aware of that. If you, if you ever want to attend any of those, we have East Topeka North, East Topeka South, and they've, they've always asked for lighting. It's never been in the budget. We finally got some in the budget. And so, I know that they've looked at going out, and Raul has been to some of the meetings, and I know they've looked at going out and trying to look again. You're right, we do need a lot, lot, lot more. But I just want you to know that they have talked about it, and it's been on their radar as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's time to flip the switch.
You can't flip it if you don't have it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Luis. Next person signed up to speak in this item is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
Thank you, Governing Body. Several weeks ago, I did comment on this, but I just want to reiterate, this first paragraph talks about setting priorities for the, the staff, and of course, the city as a whole, as the governing body, to focus on improving performance and cost effectiveness. There's a number of things and ideas that could start coming forward about how to make our workforce more productive. And I would encourage this body, if you do pass this, to set up, put this into a budget, into a committee, maybe policy or one of the committees, and actually start looking at productivity issues with, with staff, and how repairs are made, and timeliness of contracting, things that affect the overall budget, and, and have this actually, you know, get reports from staff, question staff, question the public, the public has ideas, and, and actually get some findings, some findings of fact, and, and some recommendations to the government, to the governance, to actually implement some of what you find, and what you want to do, you know, and do this over maybe a four to five month period of time, where the public can comment. The other part of this is Section Three, and I commented about this two weeks ago. It says, continuing a commitment to developing neighborhoods, including but not limited to, community policing efforts. Certainly, I've worked with High Crest for the last five years very strenuously to improve that area. We've seen some improvements, quite a bit, actually. But community policing has been very important in High Crest. The next one, continuing to engage with neighborhoods to solicit and develop unique solutions to neighborhood-specific issues. This is a big deal, because not every neighborhood is the same, just like you have certain problems on East Sixth, you have certain problems on, in High Crest. The people on the ground know what they need best. It's not going to come out of a hierarchy, it's not going to come from a top-down approach. When these people tell you that certain things are needed in their neighborhoods, which may include a newsletter, you should find funding for those things, because certainly with High Crest, that newsletter encouraged people to clean their lawns, encouraged people how to write to their landlords. I, I wrote some of those articles, to make sure that those problems with a lot of those tenements were handled correctly. People didn't know they need to put it in writing. We educated the public, we educated tenants that they also have a responsibility to clean their lawns and, and mow them. And if you've driven through that, through High Crest West this year, or recently, it's a hundred, well, it's really a lot more percent, maybe two to three hundred percent better than it was at this time last year. But that, that newsletter was very, was a very key role in how the neighborhood officers communicated to, to the residents. And a lot of people really, you know, liked getting it. Now, the point I'm making is, if there was a shortfall of a couple thousand dollars in a three hundred million dollar budget, I think we could have found that for approximately fifty-seven hundred residents of this city. I know that one time, there was a shortfall of four dollars, and the newsletter didn't go out. And I said, "I would have, I would have given that to you." This is not to pick on people. It's simply to tell you that if you're going to pass these resolutions, I think staff needs to follow them. If it says, "Continue engaging with neighborhoods to solicit," that means get, request, and develop unique solutions to neighborhood-specific issues. It clearly says, "Talk to the neighborhoods." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ledbetter. These are the only two individuals signed up to speak at this point in time. I would see if the body has any comments. Councilwoman, clear.
On line seventy, is there an end to that, or does it end with "and"? I think we're missing some verbiage. On line seventy. English, please.
I think I can help you with it.
Councilwoman Hiller?
I think if people think back to what was handed out a meeting or two ago, there was, at some point in the red line version, you could see that what had been at the end of this was moved up to the whereas', and I think it was, the wording is still there verbatim, it just, when it got relocated.
So, delete sixty-nine seventy?
Just delete.
Delete seventy.
And.
Exactly.
Semicolon and "and," and it's good.
And period.
Okay.
Okay, with that edit, any other comments? Councilwoman, clear.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, it was line, I see, it's number four, selected strategies, investments towards quality of life. Isn't that something that JDO should be taking on instead of us? Do they have some history on that?
Councilwoman Hiller?
Well, it was one of the comments that I was going to make. Obviously, when you read through the list, the city has invested in all those to some extent. I personally felt much more comfortable with the word appropriate than adequate, because we've never funded them totally, and shouldn't expect to. And, and you're right, as we move on to JDO taking a stronger role in some of these, it's a matter of partnering. I mean, we'll always be responsible for the river, but maybe not the park, that kind of thing. I agree.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Councilwoman Hiller. And I would just state that, I think that when we look at the issue of quality of life, I think that's something that's up to all of us. Quality of life could be defined as many things. I think that when you, when, when we just came down from the trail of campaigning, a lot of the things that we heard was that quality of life for many people was defined as us maintaining the roads, the way that, you know, so that it would be beautifying our roads. The other thing that was really considered under quality of life for our residents was blight in the neighborhoods. So, I think that quality of life is something that applies to all of us. I just think that there is the quality of life issues that we have as a municipality, and then there's, of course, the economic development portion of the quality of life initiatives that will bring in and retain talent.
Gotcha.
Other comments? Questions? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you. When we, when we considered this before, I had some questions. I had some concerns about whether we should have as much verbiage as was in the proposal, because we were moving toward a strategic plan, suggested that something more simple, which, which was done last year, might be appropriate, and I promise to work on those a little bit and send them out. And so, if you saw it, Liz did send out two versions yesterday morning. If anybody didn't get a copy and wants a copy, I brought a couple of them in print. Does anybody need it? Okay. I visited with the mayor as well, since she's leading the strategic plan efforts. She felt that, and don't correct me if I'm not quoting it, reporting correctly, that, that it was okay to have the verbiage as, at the level that was proposed this year, that rather than being in conflict with the strategic plan, that it was okay as a segue into that process that we will all be involved with in the, in the end of April. And with that, I am comfortable with going ahead with, with one. I stopped because there were a number of, of things about the phrasing that, that concerned me, and, and still do. There's some redundancies in there and so on, but it's a budget priorities thing, it's fine. What you have in the longer version of what I sent is, is a suggestion that if we go with this, that we change just a couple of things. In item number two, there was a phrase, the first bullet said, "Continue an active and strenuous recruitment of police officers and maintain an optimal level of officers." I felt that we should add firefighters to that, in that we have really been focusing on a shortfall in recruitment strategies for both our police and our firefighters. So what you have is, is just a two, three-word change to include "and" firefighters, and use the term personnel instead of officers. the term personnel instead of officers in that one. The next one, again relating to fire, it would be the, it's the second bullet on the second page where the language that was proposed said, "Set an action plan to improve cost effectiveness and service delivery in the fire department." My proposal would be to insert, "Set the master plan, including," in the same words, "the action plan," in that we've talked so long about where the fire stations were going to be, where are we going to do ALS or not? And I would like it to be in our budget priorities that we make those decisions this year. And I think the chief has been working toward that. So I didn't feel that that was out of line, but instead accommodated something very important that we've talked about. And then, and then in item number four, the issue that Councilwoman Cohen brought up where, when there is discussion in the first bullet about selected strategic investments toward quality of life, where the proposed language said, "Continue to evaluate adequate levels of support," my suggestion would be to substitute appropriate. I think that gives a stronger message that we're working that out and deciding where our role should be, not to just do everything. If there are questions or conversation with me about those items, I would entertain them and then, at whatever point is appropriate, I would be happy to move this version as amended to be adopted.
Councilwoman clear.
I think if we change on line 26, officers to personnel, you're saying two different things. Do you want to recruit the officers and the firefighters or you do want to maintain the personnel of the entire department? I think those are two different, they're two different things.
If I could reply?
Councilwoman Heller.
Would you then think it... I was trying to make it one word. If you think it would be more correct to say officers and firefighters, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Would take that as a friendly amendment.
Councilman Mays.
Just to speak on that, I think that personnel's adequate because there are a lot of essential personnel within the police department that are not necessarily officers. And I'm thinking of mental health professionals and folks that go along with it, that they also need an optimal level of staffing as well.
Councilwoman clear.
But I don't think that's been our concern in the past. It's been the officers. I don't think we have any concerns with other personnel. Am I wrong?
In terms of recruiting, I think that's true.
So if you're going to say recruit, it was the officers.
If I may. The wording in here says, "Maintain an optimal level of personnel," doesn't say recruit. It just says maintain.
Thank you, Councilman Mays. Any other comments or questions with regards to the amendments that Councilwoman Heller has provided to the body with regards to the priorities?
So what did they decide on?
So that, so at this point, do we want to have the motion, the initial motion withdrawn and then have Councilwoman Heller make a motion to proceed with her amendments? Or would we like to vote up and down the first motion and then proceed with Councilwoman Heller? So who start, who did the motion?
I did.
Oh, you did. Councilwoman Heller, would you like to rescind your initial motion so that you could make a motion to adopt your amendments?
Because we discussed one of them, shall I just make the motion and then clarify the amendments?
That would be, that would be adequate.
Okay. I would move to approve the resolution as presented with one change. The amendments would be on, in number two, to insert "and firefighters" in two places so that it reflects recruitment of police officers and firefighters and an optimal level of officers and firefighters. Second amendment is on page two, the second bullet, inserting the words, "master plan, including," so that we are doing a master plan for fire, not just an action plan for cost effectiveness. And third, on line number 55, "Continue to evaluate appropriate levels of support for quality of life" and so on.
And, period on 69.
And, and...
An elimination of "and."
Exactly. And eliminate "and" at the end.
Okay, so the first motion was revoked by Councilwoman Heller. Now we have a new motion, which is the adoption of the amended, the document with the amendments as presented by Councilwoman Heller. Do we have a second? We have a second. Now we're open to discussion. Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilwoman Heller, I hate to put you through this, but would you mind just reading so that we're very clear on what we're saying? Would you mind just reading those three lines with your insertions, please?
The, there is only one change from what you have in front of you. So if you want me to read that, when that is line 26, and "and," it would say firefighters and maintain an optimal level of officers and firefighters. That is the only change from what you have in front of you.
This is, I'm sorry, this is the document you handed out?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it on my computer, so it's the old, I have the original version, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Yeah.
Lines 20, 25, and 26, and line 34, and line 55.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions on the priorities? We have a motion, we have a second. The approval of this motion would allow us to adopt the budget priorities with the amendments presented by Councilwoman Heller. We now proceed with the voting.
It's just the amendments.
Just the amendments, yes.
Oh.
Nine having voting yes. All of the amendments in the priority document have been approved. We now proceed to vote on the resolution itself.
As amendment.
As amendment, as amended. Councilwoman Heller makes the motion. Councilwoman Cohen, second. Seeing no additional comments, we now proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes?
Nine having voting yes. The resolution passes. We now proceed with item F, ordinance on the IBC. If the clerk would read.
F is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, adopting the 2015 International Building Code and Local Amendment, amending City of Topeka Code Sections 240010, 1420010, 142030, and 142060, and repealing original sections.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, staff has provided a number of responses to you regarding questions related to the administrative process and that we currently utilize, and also the technical issues that, for each of the proposed code approvals, we are prepared to answer any more questions that may exist, and we request approval of the 2015 International Building Code as presented for adoption.
Thank you very much. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman clear.
Discussion.
This could be, we could either have discussion prior or you could make a motion in a second and we go into discussion.
Okay.
Whatever your pleasure.
I'll move to approve.
So we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second for the purposes of discussion? We have a second for the purposes of discussion. Discussion is now open. Councilwoman clear.
I just want to say, I read through this and I, every question I thought of, you guys had provided an answer. I was really impressed at the depth this went, so I just want to thank you for that.
Any other comments or questions? Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the staff first. I had a lot of questions. We did a deep dive through it, had a meeting where we went through a lot of things. What has drilled down is that there were a lot of outlying issues that weren't addressed in these changes. And staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've been assured that there will be a review of the staff and the automatic, the duties, separation between staff and boards. There've been some issues with our small businesses and so on on that, that the, that the role of the board's role and composition will be addressed after this vote. Also, I had concerns that the energy efficiency standards were deleted in their entirety, much upgraded from 2006. Of course, I've been assured that those will be addressed in total and the Sustainability Board will be engaged in that. And third, the building conservation code that we have that we learned about last time is 1997 version and only available in one paper copy. And I have been assured that that will be reviewed as well to see if we even still need it because of the upgrades in the code that we're going to adopt tonight, as well as it's now called the existing housing code and just to see where we are with that. So I really appreciate that. With all that, then, I have two small amendments to propose, and I did hand them out at the beginning of the meeting. May need to do them one at a time, but they really are very small. The first one, on line 15 of the IBC, makes reference in the Board of Building and Fire Appeals to Appointment of Nominations by the Mayor and Confirmed by the Council. In 2011, the council updated TMC 2.05.010, and it lays out more detail in terms of the procedures of nominations for a whole string of boards, including building and fire appeals. And so my suggestion on that is to simply delete the language by the mayor and confirm by the council and instead substitute per TMC 2.05.010. The other one that I had was that the staff in lines, in the sequence between line 600 and 603, had added a new line that reads, "A permit shall not be valid until the fees prescribed by law have been paid, nor shall an amendment to a permit be released until the additional fee has been paid." When that happened, the sentence before it had been there before, and it says, "All fees owed by the applicant shall be paid in full prior to issuance of any type of building permit." So the new sentence took care of that and elaborated on it further. And my suggestion simply was that the old sentence be deleted. I have run these by legal, they don't have any problem with those two changes. So either individually or together, I would propose these two amendments.
I think it would be safe to, at the same time, they're rather minor.
Okay, I would so move.
Councilwoman clear.
I have a question. I was going to look this up myself, but I'll just ask you. So when you say, "Per TMC 2.05," or whatever, where is that at? Where would you find that?
When you go, when you go into the municipal code?
See, I don't like that. If I got this and I was reading that and I'd say, "Oh, heck, now I've got to go somewhere else and look something else up." I would rather it's a, it's a sentence. I would leave the sentence in.
Councilwoman Heller.
The, well, I printed it out because that's what I do. I don't like looking at it online either. But the procedure in, that is pretty standard for legal, rather than repeating something that someplace else they prefer to make reference to have it in just in one place. The language in 2.05.010 says, "The council is hereby authorized to promulgate appropriate rules and regulations for such boards, commissions, and authorities. Skips on down, no city employee shall be appointed to any board, commission, or plural authority unless the appointment is specifically authorized by ordinance. Otherwise, unless otherwise provided, all members appointed to a board, commission, or plural authority shall be residents of the city." Then it goes on for the procedure and says, "The mayor shall notify council members 30 days in advance of vacancies occurring on such bodies. Shall solicit nominations from the council for filling such positions and shall appoint members to such bodies from those nominated by the council. In the event no nominations are forthcoming, the mayor shall make such appointments as are in the best interest of or will best serve the mission of the board, commission, or authority. All appointments must be confirmed by the council unless provided for. Otherwise, in this code, members will be appointed for a term of two years and shall not serve beyond the end of their appointed terms." That is a whole lot more language than, than the mayor approved by the council, and that's why I made that.
But is all of that relevant?
Yes, because that is our master ordinance.
For the building and fire?
For all of them. It lists, it applies to Human Relations Commission, Electrical Appeals, Plumbing Appeals, Mechanical Appeals, Building and Fire Appeals, Zoning Appeals, Citizen Advisory Council, Civil Service Commission, the Planning Commission, the Boards and Trustees of Police and Fire Pension Funds, the ADA Council, Sustainability Board.
Councilwoman clear.
Can you not leave that sentence in there and then put, see?
As pursuant to.
Something, yeah, as pursuant to. And then if they want more information, they can look it up.
I'll defer to legal on that.
Okay.
Actually, Councilmember Heller is correct that we are trying to make references to the particular TMC as we go through and make some of these new amendments. And that is a lot more elaborate, and we don't want to regurgitate it all, but we want to make a quick reference back to it, so.
I just think people, they're not going to read it. They're not going to go look it up and read it.
Councilmember clear. One of the reasons why we do that is just so they aren't in conflict with each other. For instance, when we're going through the Title V ordinance, we're referring everything back to 5.05 in the hearing piece because there are so many different hearing provisions in there that they all conflict with each other. So if you draw everybody back to one spot, they go back to one spot, it's one type of hearing process, and it's the same for how you nominate.
I think that's great if you have the other spot, but now you don't have all that stuff in front of you to, you know, look at.
Councilwoman Heller.
I agree with you as a rule, but I'll tell you that one of the things that caught my attention, of course, I've been on the council through this time, was when, when the charter ordinance was upgraded, the staff went through bit by bit with the council to reconcile our various ordinances with the charter. And I knew that, what caught my eye in this language was it said, "Should be appointed by the mayor and approved by the council." And something that I knew had been built in was that, was that the council was supposed to be solicited for nominations. And without that language in this section, somebody might never look and might not know. And so it was in discord and could have caused confusion in that way.
So at this point, we have two amendments to vote on. The first one would be to add the ordinance that it falls under, and then the second one would be to eliminate the first sentence that had a little bit of redundancy in the paragraph outlined by Councilwoman Heller. There's no other comments or questions, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes?
Nine having voting yes. The amendments are approved. At this point in time, we have in front of us the IBC with the amendments for your approval. Seeing no comments, I would entertain a motion. Who's made the motion over there? Councilman Lesser makes the motion to approve. The IBC has amended.
Oh. She had a motion on the table recommending we approve it.
Approval, but it never got seconded. Discuss, did?
It did. Uh huh. And then we amended it.
Okay. So then at this point in time, we have the motion and the second, and all we need to do is to vote. Nine having voting yes. The IBC ordinance is approved. We now move to item G, ordinance of the International Fire Code. If the clerk would read.
G is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, adopting the 2015 International Fire Code and Local Amendments, amending City of Topeka Code Sections 1440010 through 1440050 and 144110 and 120, repealing said original sections and creating new section 144115.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The same comments apply to the fire code. We have it presented for your approval tonight.
We have it presented for your approval tonight.
What is the pleasure of the body? We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilwoman Clear. Do we have discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion, we will proceed with the voting to approve the International Fire
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The ordinance passes. We now move forward to item H, Ordinance of the Life Safety Code. If the clerk would read.
H is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout concerning adoption of the 2015 Life Safety Code, amending City of Topeka Code Section 1445-10, and repealing said original section and repealing Section 1445-020 in its entirety.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is also presented, the Life Safety Code is presented for adoption. I guess the last comment I'll have as we begin this process is that, obviously, this has been a lively discussion relative to the considerations of these codes. I think it's been very good in a lot of ways from the standpoint of it's made us reach out to the business community, those that are doing building. We've had a lot of good discussions. It's opened doors in areas and now has started a continued conversation that we've had. Mr. Faulkner had a good meeting. The Small Business Administration intends to development folks, and they're working at continuing that discussion on a regular basis. And so, I think that that has been a positive outcome of the difficulty that we had initially of finding our foot, our feet underneath us relative to this issue. So, thank you for that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilman Cohen seconds. Do we have discussion? Seeing none? Is there, we proceed with the voting.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. The motion passes. I'm extremely proud of the work that staff has done with all of this. Thank you, City Manager Trout, for your leadership and to all the departments that were really involved in getting this going. Like City Manager said, we certainly had some preheated discussion when some of these items came about. There was a lot of passion and a lot of concern to make sure that we had good conversation. And I think that we are now with a better understanding on why and how we have a delay sometimes in approving some of these changes, how we go back to our community and we do this, and this really has been an exercise of us working together. And I feel like because of all the work that you all put, us as council members now have a much better and deeper understanding on how these regulations are working for our community so that we can advocate what our business is. So, thank you very much for all that you've done. We now move to announcements. If the clerk would read the preliminary agenda.
On the prelim agenda, we have two proclamations next week. The first one is Sexual Assaults Awareness Month, and the second is Fair Housing. We have a presentation on the Downtown Plaza. We have a noise exception on the consent agenda along with a special event for the 2018 German Fest. For non-action items, we will have a discussion on the Quit and Height Still Neighborhood Plan. We will have a discussion on Agenda Contents Order, and then we will have a discussion on the extension of the city retailer sales tax.
City Manager?
Mayor, the only item that I have is if there are other council members that would like to speak Thursday at the press conference, please contact me. We're finishing up the agenda and speakers list relative to that, so if you would like to make a few comments, I have Councilman Lesser and also Councilwoman Clear at this point, but if you do want to, please let me know so I can add you to the speakers list. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to extend my thanks to the members of the military community. Last week, we had a fabulous Military Relations Council meeting. It was wonderful that we recognized all of our service members, not just our military personnel, but our fire individuals and our police staff as well that do so much for our community. And it was a great moment of pride when we were recognizing all of the people who have served our nation, to have our City Manager there and stand up to be recognized as well. That was a great event. In addition to that, I want to congratulate Fellowship Bible Church for their successful launch of the church over at Netreach. At Highcrest, it was a beautiful event. For those of you that were there, I got a chance to look at the run-through of the message. Pastor Sobled is funny. So, congratulations over there. It's just beautiful to see what's been happening. And then finally, just wanted to again extend my appreciation to the members that were today at the mayor's domestic and sexual violence task force. We had some pretty meaty discussion. There has been an increase in attendance, so much so that we had to move our meeting from the original location. I'm excited that the firefighters are also interested in being part of this task force, and we are having some really meaningful discussions right now. And the last thing that I will say is that as mayor of the city, I've taken the initiative to really speaking with every single person in the city that I can talk with. And one of the biggest blessings, sometimes we work with a lot of individuals, and people look at us like we lack humanity because we have the roles that we have, and we encounter some pretty difficult conversations. I often tell people that it's really interesting what happens once you get elected to sit on this bench. There's an immediate entitlement sometimes to speak to you as if you don't have any worth or dignity, and sometimes that happens to our staff. But I tell you what, guys, if you have the opportunity to go and have lunch with the ladies at the prison, at the Shawnee County Annex, it was beautiful. There was more humanity in those ladies and more sincerity that I've seen in many people sometimes. Not this group, because this group is awesome. I will say that, and I always say that. And I'm not just saying that in jest. I always praise all of you guys. But it was an amazing experience to sit down with these ladies who've had a challenge in their life and that they've not lost the hope of a better future. They have not lost the hope of being engaged in their community. They have not lost the hope of what tomorrow is going to bring. Barry Peaker is part of that. They have an amazing group of people that are talking to them, filling them with inspiration, talking to them about faith, and just, it's an amazing thing. So, if you do have the opportunity, I would recommend that you all contact Rich Christie and have a life-changing experience, because it's absolutely beautiful. So, thank you to all of those ladies that gave up their time and opened up their hearts because it was a moving experience. Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. Could we clarify the press conference date and time? It's Thursday at 11:00, and it was at the Law Enforcement Center, right?
Yes, correct. It's at 11:00 AM at the Law Enforcement Center.
Okay. And we'll be there for that. I also wanted to tell you guys a little bit about the house that they're going to be giving away over in, it's just outside of my district. It's just south of Miller's Glen. If you guys have ever been by there, drive down Indian Hills Road and just look off to the west, and there's a brand-new house on the corner. That house is put together by Drip A Construction, and all of the subs, subcontractors volunteered their services as well as the general contractor. The city waived the building fee so they could do construction there. And this is going to be a free home. You're going to need to buy a ticket, a raffle ticket for $100, and I see that they're on sale right now. So, if you're interested in a $400,000 home, oh, something else I wanted to say is I heard today that one of our local furniture stores is going to be furnishing the house also. So, this is a real community effort here in Topeka. Yeah, it was going to be about a $400,000 house, and all the funds raised are going to be given to St. Jude. So, I hope you guys get out there and buy a ticket. We're going to be buying a ticket.
Where can you get to that?
If you just Google "dream home giveaway," and it'll take you right to the St. Jude site, and you can buy your tickets. Tickets are $100.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Lesser? Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for saying a few words and taking the moment about Linda Brown today. I mourn her passing but celebrate her life so much, and I think it's a time that all of us, you know, we know that things are bubbling up around town anyway, to engage and advance the agenda that Brownby Board started, that that little girl was the icon for as a child and an adult. And so, it's sobering but heartening as well. We've got work to do, and just, thank you, Linda. Thank you for your life. Wanted to thank staff again for all the work on codes and CIP. We also had our first hearing, committee hearing about the tax increment financing in this past week, so it's been a busy week for deep dives in policy, and just thanks to everybody that's helped out on that. On a little bit more fun angle, I have show and tell to pass around to my colleagues, and I have some extras for the public. The District One Crime Summit is this Saturday, and as we met, I just checked to make sure I had the LEC down on my calendar. Two of my different neighborhood folks finished flyering their neighborhoods. The entire district has been flyer on foot by residents of District One, and I'm really proud of that. I really appreciate the police's help. I got to see the final version of an FAQ set, Commonly Asked Questions, that Officer Wall has done for the summit. We'll be releasing that. We've got six classes. We've got interaction with the officers. Really excited about Saturday morning. If there is a blizzard, watch the TV. I got that question today too, but we're thinking everybody's going to be just fine. And last but not least, it is tulip time, despite the way it looks outside. Apparently, the tulips themselves are late, and so Lake Shawnee's tulip time has been postponed from the 8th of April till the 22nd, their big all-day celebration. Meanwhile, Ward Mead is full of tulips that haven't quite bloomed as well, but tulip time will nonetheless start on the 5th. And for the second year, we will have Tulips at Twilight. And instead of just being two days, Tulips at Twilight is going from the 6th of April all the way through the 15th. And if you didn't see it, it is amazing. Go by yourself and be in awe, but if you can, take kids and people that don't get out much, because it is magical. And when you look at those tulips at Twilight, there's a, he gave me one poster just to show and tell a little bit, but when you see those big tulips, those are made out of dime store angel wings. The little, the lilies of the valley, the ones that look like Lily of the Valley, are made out of little, little plastic cups with LED lights in them. Volunteers have made everything that's there out of just household items for the most part, and it is magic. So, just a shout-out to all the Ward Mead volunteers and encourage you all to go.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clear? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't see Chaz in the city. He did a great job at Garfield Easter egg hunt. He did an excellent job, and there was a lot of kids and adults there. It was very windy, but he did an excellent job, and I just wanted to tell him publicly, well done. Do we have a smoke alarm update? Anybody?
All right. Well, I'll wait till next week. I see the fire marshal, did he leave too? Okay. I gave him a report to run some names for me, so we'll do that. You have a week to get your, call in for your smoke alarms. And on the Jude Dream Home, I hope we can get some smoke alarms in there. You know, can we do that? Okay, can you handle that? One of the questions that I did receive on that was, why are they selling only so many tickets? I heard they were selling only so many tickets, and people were kind of disappointed in that, so I think they want to buy more tickets. I don't know. It's for a good cause, but anyway. There was a lot of Easter egg hunts and a lot of fun this weekend, and I thought that was really, really awesome in spite of our weather. Thank you.
Next is Councilman Emerson, also Noah Stoney Henderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to repeat what Councilwoman Heller already said, the Tulip Time Festival at Lake Shawnee, which was scheduled to be this weekend, has been moved to Sunday, April 22nd. So, if you go to Ward Mead Park this weekend, it'll probably be there, but save your money and go out to District Four on the 22nd.
Donation only.
Okay, okay. Dine and in the many restaurants we have out there, District Four way there on the 22nd. Thank you.
Councilman Pariya?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things. One, a reminder also that this coming Saturday, the Topeka Police Department is conducting their Citizens Academy, and they will have participation with their, I can't remember the acronym now for the live, for the...
Milo.
Milo, okay? Simulated Firearms Training. And if you have the chance to stop out there, I know that the staff down at the police department training will take your name. Just call down there, give them your name, and they'll give you the details of the time and where to go to attend. And just, I'd like to make a comment to, and thank you to Mr. Estrada and Mr. Menos. I appreciate you coming in and speaking on behalf of your community on that side of Topeka. Sometimes we don't get enough representation from that side of town, and I don't know for what reason, maybe they don't feel comfortable coming in here and speaking, but I appreciate you taking the time to come down here and do that, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Mays?
I'll be real brief. My nine-year-old son, Winston, has been watching the council meetings at home. He asked me to say hello. So, I thought I'd say hi.
Hi, buddy.
Hi, Winston.
We all say hi to you, bud. Councilwoman Ortiz wanted to add something.
I did. Since Jason Peak has taken notes, I dodged five potholes in the going to court on Monday. Five. Now, don't ask me how many I hit. I will bring my bill, okay, because my car is out of alignment. But we've got to do something about that. That is our responsibility. City Manager, you can take that note as well. I know we were supposed to be putting a plan together. I've been screaming that for years. We've got to work fast and get it somewhere in there, because when you are on your way like me, driving at the last minute trying to get to court, and those potholes are full of water, that staff did a great job of filling the U part, but the side towards the courthouse is not, not good at all. It's going to be, I'm going to be, this is the third time I've done something to my car. And I say that because I know people out there say, "Well, you know, you would have your car fixed." I can't, I can't. But I am reporting it. I am reporting it on this day. Thank you.
All right. We now proceed, oh, no, Councilman, no, you started. We now proceed with public comment. The first person signed up to speak is Mr. Steve Mills.
Madam Mayor, Council, thanks for taking the time to visit with us today. My name is Steve Mills. I am the Executive Director of Talk Topeka. It's Denet Wallace, my Associate Director. I'm a lifelong Topekan. I love Topeka. Some of you I know, some of you I don't. Some of you have known me, well, at least one of you has known me since I was a baby. But that said, we love Topeka, and our city has questions from time to time. And sometimes, when you have questions, there's a comfort level. Sometimes it seems to be an easy situation to go directly to the city council and ask a question. Other times, it's easier to ask, please excuse me, I had massive mouth surgery yesterday.
Yes, you did.
So, this is a little painful, but necessary. So, we came up with this Talk Topeka concept. Basically, what we do is we do a weekly show, talking with a city leader, someone in the city. Doesn't necessarily have to be a city council member, doesn't have to be the mayor, it could be, you know, someone...
Business owner.
Business owner, Curtis Pitts, someone like that that's doing something in the community to help the community thrive. We also have a daily component that we will be adding to that as well. If you go to the website, talktopeka.com, or talktopeka.org, you see tons of things, including show archives. There's a link there for the City of Topeka, so when you click on that link, everything that has... So, when you click on that link, everything that has anything to do with the city of Topeka, Go Topeka, 7-12 Innovations, the whole thing. I mean, this is a, the one website that I could find that I could link everything from the city of Topeka in one place, because there's not one website that does that. So, we felt like that, that was a need. Topeka News, you'll notice that if there's anything that's happening, fires, kidnappings, those things, automatically RSS feeds directly to this page. It automatically notifies people. There's a, a feature here for school cancellations and closings that, that I worked with a company to, to create. Basically, what the software does is rather than a school district calling the television station, the television station having to wonder whether, you know, someone has hijacked the code, they, they sign up here, they register, they say, okay, hey, school's closed, and it automatically sends the information to all the different media outlets into the city. And it can be used not just for schools, it could be used for parks and rec. It could be used for, just a way for people to know, hey, this stuff is closed, the mall's closed, that type of a thing.
You thought, well, one minute.
One of the more important things is a community spotlight. We spotlight, we did a community spotlight this month with Dr. Bro New, USD 501. We have some other spotlight set up as well. And if you look at the front of the page, one of the things that we did spotlight was Linda Brown, who, you know, passed away, obviously, as you discussed, at the age of 76. The reason that we bring this to your attention is just that, you know, we, we're committed to serving Topeka. This is our home, this is going to continue to be our home. And we just hope that you'll, excuse me, take a, take a look at the site and let us know what you think, and we hope to be able to work with you in the coming days and months as we do have a meeting to visit with the City Manager as well.
And I just want to say, our community is diverse, and that's as evidence of the council itself. We want to show that diversity through Talk Topeka.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Dinette, which was already here.
You've got another four minutes if you want it.
We get extra time.
You, you would get four minutes if you have anything that you would like to add.
Sure.
Since you signed up.
As I was saying, Talk Topeka is a nonprofit organization. We're not here to get rich, any of that. What we want to do is show the diversity of the city. We are aware of Talk About Topeka, we are aware of Chris Schultz, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel or take anyone's place. What we are trying to do is show the different sides of, of Topeka. There are so many things that are going on in this city right now, so many situations, so, I mean, so many different communities that need to be shown as Topeka. We are multicultural city, and I just feel like there's information out there that we all can share with each other, and that's what Talk Topeka is about. We want to be a hub for the city. We want to be a hub where people can go and learn what, maybe I won't go to Councilwoman Heller's, you know, district, but it doesn't mean I don't need to know what's going on there. Same thing with all of your districts. We can be a hub to put out information that can get to all races, all cultures, all environments, all sides of town, and that's what we want to do. We want to be that hub. And we also want to help you all disperse information. We want to help get information out where we can come on-site and do some interviews or do some videos of different organizations that provide resources in the city, just so people know what's out there. And so, by us being a nonprofit organization, what we want to do is give back to the community as we get sponsors, as we get donors, as we get people to interview, whatever money we raise or collect, outside of administration costs, of course, we want to sell that money back into Topeka.
I'm so proud of her. So, you mentioned a couple of things. You mentioned potholes. You mentioned, I mean, we're, basically, we love our city, and so basically what we want to do is, is we want, we will probably present opportunities for sponsorships throughout the, throughout these segments. And outside of admin fees, because obviously we all have other employment and, you know, we just would pay in admin or what have you, we're going to give that money back to the city. We want to help fix potholes. We want to put playgrounds in, in, in schools and, and churches and, and do the things that this city needs. Because, I mean, we understand that, you know, you're talking about the budget right now. Excuse me, this, my eye is astring because of the teeth that they took out. You're talking about budgets and those types of things, and we want to be able to supplement those things, and that's what we want to give back to our city. You know, 40 years strong. And I love Topeka. I couldn't imagine, I mean, the times that I've moved away, you know, being in a management position with Cumulus and getting promoted to corporate and what have you, I couldn't imagine not ever coming home. And now that I have the opportunity to be here, my mom's elderly, this is a good opportunity, and we really want to just give back to the entire city.
The entire city. This weekend, I don't know if you all know, there were four churches that came together to do an Easter egg hunt, and we were on-site. They had over 600 kids. They gave out over 7,000 eggs. That's something Topeka needs to know about. That's an accomplishment. One, our churches are working together, and then organizations that are working together. So, there's a lot of information out there to be given. We, we respect Talk About Topeka. We're not enemies. We just want to share it from a different perspective and a different point of view. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Ms. Oshara Misra. Mis, yeah, Oshara Misra. It's Misra. It wasn't spelled right here. She, she went.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Ms. Oshara.
I am so glad to be here with you all this evening, and I do want to preface it by saying that I, too, am from East Topeka, and I'm glad that we spoke about East Topeka and what we need over there and how things are going and how we can all speak for ourselves and our community. I want to thank you all for, for showing up in the community, and I really appreciate that. And I just want to, as you, ask, ask you, as you show up, to show up with eyes of the people that are talking to you, if you can, to hear the voices of grassroots people coming up and organizations. And I know that you all have a job to do and you all have agendas, and you all have plans that you have, you know, before you that you have to follow, but I ask you to hear the voices that are coming before you, and thank you for, for doing that also, and then I ask you to continue to do that. I just want to, yeah, that's basically what I wanted to say, and I want to reiterate that, and just thank you all for just being here, and thank you for hearing us, and, and I'm glad to know that I, as a citizen, have the opportunity to come before you and just say thank you, and just, you know, be able to say, hear us, and thank you for everything. Thank you. That's all.
Yeah, thank you, Oshara. Great to see you walking without the cane.
I know. I feel so bad. Thank you.
This concludes our public comment section. We do have the need to recess into two executive sessions tonight. If the city attorney would read the parameters of the first executive session.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 30 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters regarding litigation involving the city as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Financial Administrative Services Director Nikki Lee, Chief of Litigation Shelley Starr, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
Okay, we have an accession, an executive session not to exceed 30 minutes. We have, we have a motion by Councilman Cohen, a second by Councilman Emerson. We now proceed with the vote.
We have nine yes.
Oh, yeah. Nine having voted yes. The executive session will convene after a five-minute break for the body, as the room is emptied. No action has been taken. If the city attorney can read, we have another short session in which we don't expect to have any action taken. City Attorney?
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 10 minutes to discuss confidential employment matters pertaining to non-elected personnel as justified by KSA 75-4319V1. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell. Period.
All of those in favor to have an executive session not exceeding 10 minutes? Okay, we don't even have a motion. Do we have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. So moved?
Emerson makes the motion. Cohen seconds. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Okay, we now go into executive session. The meeting has been adjourned, the meeting has concluded. There has been no actions taken. This meeting is adjourned.